Good evening. I would like to call to order the licensing board for March 4th, 6:25 p.m. We have two items on the agenda. Approval of minutes from regular meeting December 18th, 6:25 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number two, appointment of successor agent Aldis.
Motion to approve.
Just a person replacing all these?
That is correct.
Everything is in order?
Yes, it is.
Okay. You have motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Being no further business before the licensing board, I adjourn as chair. I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works, March 4th, 2024. We have four items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of minutes from February 19th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in, all in. Any deletions or additions? There are none? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number two, HSIP 01, Main and Paradise, authorization to work within existing stormwater management easement. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is for, believe it or not, the city to authorize itself and its contractors to work within an easement that the city owns within our HISA project to improve a few intersection, signalized intersection in the city. So this stormwater easement is at the northwest corner of Paradise Drive and Silverbrook Drive. And because of the process that we have to follow, because of the federal funding that we're receiving for this project, we have to take formal action to authorize contractors to work within that existing easement. So I'm looking for formal action from the board and council in order to proceed with the project.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in, all in. Sternig. Any questions for Max? There are no questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number three, award contract 24-04, sidewalk repairs.
Thank you again. This item is for annual sidewalk program contract that we bid every year. And the project was bid with four groups based on our usual priority system. We received four bids that were open on February 23rd, and they are listed in the memo. The low bidder is TP Concrete Services LLC. And based on work done previously on the city contract, we recommend that the contract be awarded to TP Concrete Services LLC in the amount of $120,685. And we also recommend a contingency fund of $6,315, which is about 5.23% of the bid, for a total allocation not to exceed $127,000 for this project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in, Sternig. Who has the motion? All in, Allen. Any questions for Max? All in, Allen.
Yeah, what was our estimate for the work?
The estimate that we had was $140,000.
Any other questions? All right, there are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number four, award contract 24-10, Mill Overlay Streets in Willow View Estate subdivision.
Thank you again. This item is to address streets in Willow View Estate subdivision, which was developed between 2003 and 2008. And at the time, the plan was to install the binder lift of asphalt and then build the houses on the lot and install the surface lift of asphalt. Unfortunately, in 2008, 2009, there were some economic recession and some roads never received a final lift of asphalt. And they are severely deteriorated right now. And so the project is to address those streets within the subdivision and repave those streets. We received four bids for this contract on February 23rd. They are listed in the memo. And Payne and Dolan is the apparent low bidder. And based on work previously done under contract for the city, we recommend that this contract in the amount of $209,979 be awarded to Payne and Dolan, along with a contingency fund of $11,021, about 5.25% of the bid, for a total allocation not to exceed $221,000 for this project.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in, Allen. All in, Sparts. Second. Any questions? All in, Dolan.
Max, I think, I seem to recall this discussion maybe when we were setting, working on the budget or the capital projects, because this scenario sounds familiar. In any event, the developer was supposed to pay for the final lift originally. Now what happens?
So yes, we talked about this before. Basically, upon advice by the city attorney, what we decided to do is to get the work done and then send the invoice to the developer after the fact.
They're still in business, then?
I'm not sure if they are still in business, but the developer is still around.
Okay.
A few years ago, we had reached out to him. He could not hire a contractor to do this work. We ended up deciding to get it done and then invoice him after the fact, because at the time, he wanted to do it. It was too late in the season to hire a contractor.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, all in, Allen.
Yeah, I know we discussed, we didn't, we, when we put this out to bids, we went over that, but what was, what was our estimate for what this was going to cost?
So the estimate was $188,225. So the bids that we received are a little higher than the estimate that we had. I looked, analyzed the estimate versus the low bid, and found that the area where the contractors' costs were higher was in the milling of the pavement and brick run in case of excavation. So we're always having our contract an item to reinforce the road subgrade if, as we excavate, we find bad soils. So we have that bid item in the contract, and that is where the contractor has a higher cost in their bid. Hopefully, we do not run into this situation where we have to reinforce the subgrade, but we have this in the contract just in case.
Yeah, I noticed all, all four of the estimates were, for all practical purposes, the same amount.
Yes, we had, we had a very competitive bid on that one.
All right. Any others? All right, we have motion on four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Be, there are no business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
The Finance Committee is called to order. We have four items on the agenda. Item number one is the approval of the minutes from the regular February 19th meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, approval of an amendment to airport hangar lease lot 13 at 310 Aerial Drive. Anybody?
Well, this is, it's in your packet. This is our standard lease lot to a new individual. It went through the Airport Commission. If you have any questions, I can.
Motion approved. Second.
Man, I can't open it up on my tablet. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion about that? Go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question. This is the EAA hangar, and, and they do things like have meetings in there. How does that square with our normal lease agreement that says you can put a hang, a plane in there and you can do maintenance on a plane? And beyond that, you can't.
So this is creating that additional lot for an additional hangar. Their, their hangar won't change. They have a separate building where their planes are and where they, where they recreate. They did have to give some land for this to be created, and they, they did so collaboratively with, with the Airport Commission.
Okay.
And, and to answer some of your questions, it's because it's aviation-related, because EAA is aviation-related and, you know, I don't know, maybe it's not 100%, but because of what it is, it's, it's fine. It's not like if I owned a hangar and ran my office out of it type of thing. It's because they are aviation-related, it's generally all included.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor, signal.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, a resolution to accept Wisconsin Department of Administration Neighborhood Investment Fund grant third payment. Resolution is in your packet. It's fairly straightforward. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Finally, we have a resolution to, we have a resolution to invoice costs of raising property. Ian?
So this resolution is attempting to bring some of the saga that was the building at 2100 Northwestern Avenue to a close. The, the city raised the property back in, or the raised the building back in 2020. There are numerous environmental and legal issues kind of associated with collecting these funds, and the city has been waiting to try and figure out what the best method is based on the property, the ultimate avenues for remediation of the environmental contamination, and then just analyzing the best way to recoup the costs, because if we had put it on the tax roll, the city loses control of it. If we had, you know, we have the option to put some of it on the property as well as a judgment. It was just kind of balancing which was the best avenue. So everything was noticed with the raise order. When it was issued the first time, there was significant litigation over getting the order to raise it, and then some subsequent appeals of that order prior to the raising. So there's been plenty of notice to the property owner that this process was taking place. This is just finally moving towards collecting it from the property.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion. And a second, Justice?
Yeah, I just, this is in my, my district, so I just have some curiosities about it. And you basically answered my question, telling me why we hadn't had it on the tax roll already. Have we heard from the property owner at all since this was put on the agenda?
The existing owner, no. We have not heard from them.
And I was just going to point out for the people watching at home that sometimes there's impatience with things like this. It took five years from the raise order till the building could be raised because of the process.
Yeah, it took longer than that. I mean, this, this has been, there's been about five raise orders dating back to year 2000.
Lots of warning, lots of notice, yep.
Especially with large buildings like this, it is not a fast process just because of the magnitude of the project, the legalities involved, and the, yeah, the money, I mean...
This is the Berman Cole building we're talking about, by the way.
Correct, correct. And even after grants, it's 300, what, $68,000, so.
All in, Allen.
Just a quick question. Are they, are they paying their taxes? In other words, do they keep current on their taxes?
No.
Or put them in an escrow account?
No.
So they clearly have no desire to exercise.
Yeah, I mean, and that, and that was a factor in how we move forward, because they weren't paying taxes. So this would have kind of been just one more in the subsequent in the way the county forecloses on their tax deeds. It, you know, we had a couple of properties where there were special assessments for road construction that got sold out from under those, and that was not a good prospect for this amount of money.
All right. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're adjourned.
All right. Good evening. It is Monday, March 4th, 6:40 p.m. This is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice that the time, place, date, subject, matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to the Wisconsin State statute. I would like to ask the clerk to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Thank you very much. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do recognize a quorum of our council tonight. I am the council president and will presiding over this meeting. Mayor Angaard is excused due to another commitment. Move on to the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting from February 19th, 2024.
Motion approved. Second.
All in, all in. First question. Any changes, corrections? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number two, our presentations we have of office for Police Officer Nicholas S. Brothers. Good evening, Chief.
Thank you for letting us take the time. It's a great night for the Police Department, for our community tonight, to celebrate not only meeting our newest member, but also recognizing a long-serving citizen, member of our Police and Fire Commission, and then this great crowd of citizens who are engaged in the safety of West Bend. The police are the people and the people are the police. Sir Robert Peel has told us that for the last 200 years, and this night tonight will remind me. So to begin with, I'd like to have Nick join us to take his oath of office.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nicholas S. Brothers.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
As police officer?
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend?
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County?
Washington County.
Swear that I will support?
I swear that I'll support.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin?
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully?
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of said office?
Of said office.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.[1063.33][1063.33](applause)
So as Nick is making his oath of office official, I'd like to tell you a little bit about it. It's kind of a success story for us. Nick came up to us from Oakland, California area, where he was a sworn deputy with Alameda County, worked in the classification unit in the jail, and is moving here to be with his great family here as he and his girlfriend Taylor and their, their boy Easton. Come on up, Easton. Come on up.[1100.23][1100.23](laughter) Because they make a home here in our community. That's wonderful. You got me there, buddy. So Nick, Nick was a student athlete, played at University of Massachusetts-Boston, played baseball, so he's going to fit in really well here in West Bend. It's a ball town. So we look forward to seeing Easton out there.
Yeah, literally.
And as our tradition, I have to tell you, since we met Nick, our old team and our family back here met Nick through our process, we identified him immediately as two things. One, a great fit for our community and our department, and two, that we were a great fit for him, so we're looking to prove you right.
Absolutely. I'm Bobby.
So also, our tradition here is to make sure that we recognize that your family is joining our family. We sold this ceremony from the Fire Department when we realized how important it was to have a member of Nick's family pin his badge on, to symbolize the importance that it is for all of us and how our families stand behind us. This job can get, can be kind of all-encompassing, and we tasked this great family here with keeping him a whole person, making sure he takes those vacations, making sure he travels, making sure he gets his family, and all that. So with that, Dad, if you come up and Taylor, bring him back up and have his father, Bob, pin his badge on.
Bob?[1195.92][1195.92](laughter)
EIO says we have to move on to our microns. Kevin McGann, this is our public information officer. Let's make sure we print it correct.[1256.58][1256.58](applause) Congratulations, welcome. And honorably, of course. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Item number two, presentations we have for Police Department, citizen of 3214, presented by Chief.
Yep, and as is the custom, our awards will actually be read out by Captain Rullinger tonight, but just a, a quick moment to just really say how, how touching it is to see this room. I'm sure John is thinking they probably showed up to see his debut as leading the council, but it really is a, a testament to how committed our community is to public safety, to supporting the Fire Department, supporting the Police Department, our DPW, our Parks workers, our, everyone, our local government. You're going to hear some stories tonight, truly, that symbolize that we are a safer community because we have an informed and engaged community. So with that, I'll turn that over to Captain Rullinger.
Good evening. We're going to do this in chronological order, going back to February of 2023. Kevin Feltes is not here, but he gave us permission to read his story. On Thursday, February 9th, 2023, at 3:16 p.m., Kevin Feltes was removing snow at the southeast corner of the intersection of Silverbrook Drive and Chestnut Street when he witnessed a vehicle strike a stop sign. The vehicle did not stop and drove away from the scene. Mr. Feltes obtained a vehicle description, plate number, and contacted the West Bend Police Department. The driver was later located by officers and issued a citation for hit and run. Mr. Feltes further assisted the DPW workers by making the fallen sign visible to traffic until a replacement temporary sign could be installed. Mr. Feltes's report and cooperation with the police led to the offender being located, identified, and held accountable.[1413.01][1413.01](applause) Kathryn Geidel, Terry Hamlin, and Carrie Cars. I believe Terry and Carrie might be here. Terry and Carrie? All right. As they, as they make their way up, on Sunday, April 16th, 2023, at 9:54 a.m., the West Bend Police Department received reports, several reports, of a man passed out in a vehicle while stopped at the intersection of West Paradise Drive and South Main Street. Kathryn Geidel flagged down an officer in the area while Terry Hamlin and Carrie Cars called West Bend Police Dispatch. Upon the officer's arrival in the area, the vehicle in question was observed northbound on Main Street, and the officer, the officer stopped the vehicle in the 1600 block of South Main Street. During the investigation, the officer detected an odor of marijuana coming from the vehicle. The driver admitted to having marijuana in the vehicle. A search of the vehicle located marijuana, a scale, prescription medication not belonging to the driver, and a loaded firearm. The driver was a convicted felon. The driver failed standardized field sobriety tests. The driver was arrested for operating while impaired, possession of marijuana, possession of a prescription without a valid prescription, armed while intoxicated, carrying a concealed weapon, felon in possession of a firearm, operating after suspension, and a probation hold. Ms. Geidel, Mr. Hamlin, and Ms. Cars acted quickly and contacted police, which led to the arrest of an impaired driver, as well as getting drugs and a weapon out of the hands of a felon. Michelle Lang. I don't believe Michelle is here, unless she slipped in. Michelle Lang also gave us permission to read her story. On Thursday, May 4th, 2023, at around 7:00 p.m., Michelle Lang was riding her bicycle on the path near the river when she observed an obscene drawing in spray paint on the bridge of the Eisenbaum Trail that crosses over the Milwaukee River. Ms. Lang also noticed she could smell fresh spray paint, and immediately, and immediately called police to report it. The responding officers located two juveniles still in the area who found, who were found to have spray paint on them. The juveniles admitted to spray painting the obscene drawing on the bridge, and Ms. Lang's quick action greatly assisted in locating and apprehending the actors in this case.[1568.36][1568.36](applause) Brett Leclerc. There he is. On Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, at around, around 5:52 p.m., officers and the West Bend Fire Department paramedics were dispatched to Walmart for a report of a male who had fallen inside the store, was bleeding from the head, and was unresponsive. Brett Leclerc, an employee of Walmart, responded to help the man. Mr. Leclerc assessed the man and realized the man was not breathing and did not have a pulse. Mr. Leclerc started CPR before officers arrived on scene. West Bend paramedics also arrived and continued life-saving intervention, transported the man to a hospital, and three weeks later, he was finally discharged after recovering. Mr. Leclerc's quick assessment and intervention to start CPR played a pivotal role in saving the man's life.[1623.92][1623.92](applause) Kristin Moore and Mary Sue Larky. I believe Kristin might be here, but Mary Sue was unable to join us. As Kristin makes her way up, on May 25th, 2023, around 3:30 p.m., Kristin Moore was driving northbound on South Main Street near Chestnut, and Mary Sue Larky was driving southbound on South Main Street. Both witnessed a girl on a bicycle cross Main Street rather quickly, followed by a boy on a bicycle. When the boy was in the intersection, he was struck by a northbound vehicle. The boy was knocked off his bicycle and sustained injuries and was laying in the road. Both women, who are trained in first aid, immediately stopped their vehicles and tended to the boy. They remained with the boy, keeping him calm and still, until West Bend Police and Fire Department paramedics arrived. Both are commended for their willingness to get involved, utilizing their training, and the kindness demonstrated toward a child in need.[1689.76][1689.76](applause) Dennis Kratz, Sr., Griz, Michael Crepez, and Jonathan Leonardz. If you all could make your way up. I believe Michael can't make it, but Jonathan and Dennis are here, as well as Griz. Bet people are wondering why. On September 22nd, 2023, around 11:30 a.m., Dennis Kratz, Sr., and his dog, Griz, were in the parking lot of Habitat for Humanity when Griz started barking. Griz, a well-trained dog that only barks when something is wrong, started barking, which caused Mr. Kratz to look at a vehicle where he saw a man slumped over behind the wheel. Mr. Kratz immediately notified employees of the business. Employee Jonathan, Jonathan Leonardz and customer Michael Crepez went to the parking lot to check on the man. Mr. Leonardz noticed the man in the vehicle was, checked his, checked his vital signs, noticed he was unresponsive, and immediately called 911. Mr. Crepez noticed the vehicle was still running and not in park. Mr. Crepez was able to get the vehicle in park while Mr. Leonardz remained with the man and monitored his agonal breathing until personnel from the Police Department and Fire Department arrived. It was determined the man in the vehicle was suffering a narcotic overdose. West Bend Fire Department paramedics were able to revive the man, and he was eventually arrested for operating while under the influence and possession of marijuana. Due to Mr. Kratz and his canine's keen observation skills, Mr. Crepez and Mr. Leonardz's quick actions during an overdose, they saved a man's life and removed an impaired during an overdose, they saved a man's life and removed an impaired driver from the roadway. Scott Cecil, Anthony Clemmie, and Nevin Stolz, something very, very Eastern European. Is Nevin here? Because I'm going to ask him to help pronounce his last name. Stolz Vlajevic. We'll be calling him Nevin when we refer to him in here. S-T-O-J-S-A-V-L-J-E-V-I-C. Any suggestions? All right. On September 23rd, 2023, around 11:00 PM, officers were dispatched to the area of Collins Deck Bar for a report of an intoxicated man who was yelling and screaming and threatening patrons. An officer had located a man in front of the tavern and tried engaging the man in conversation about his behavior. The man tried walking away from the officer. The officer told the man to stop and grabbed the man's right hand and told him he was under arrest. The man lunged at the officer's waist and fought with the officer. During the scuffle, the officer ended up on the ground with a man on top of him. A second officer arrived on scene and deployed a taser against the man, but the man continued to resist even after the taser deployment. One of the officers recognized a patron friend who was nearby and requested assistance from him to assist in controlling the man until additional police officers could arrive. Scott Cecil, Anthony Clemmie, and Nevin came to the aid of officers and helped control the man's legs and arms. The officers were able to handcuff the man. Mr. Cecil, Mr. Clemmie, and Mr. Nevin's willingness to assist police in controlling the resisting subject allowed officers to safely take the male into custody. Their assistance prevented the situation from escalating further and potentially putting other bystanders, the man, and officers at risks. Thank you. Abigail Hall could not be here tonight. This is a short one, but she gave us permission to read it. On October 15th, 2023, Abigail Hall found a wallet at Holy Hill Basilica, which contained over $600 in cash, a passport, and numerous credit cards. Ms. Hall went to a local police department who referred her to the West Bend Police Department because she lives here in West Bend. The wallet was taken for safekeeping, and the owner was located. The wallet's owner collected his wallet and was very grateful for Ms. Hall's actions. Ms. Hall's honesty is commendable. Ashley Duchow and Brandon Volk. Duchow? Is it Duchow? Duco? Duco, Duco. I'll get it right. You're here to correct me. On June 18th, 2023, around 10:00 AM, Ashley Duco, a nurse, was working as a waitress at the Charcoal Grill. Brandon Volk was a customer eating in the dining room. Ms. Duco heard a commotion in the dining room and noticed a customer was choking on food and turning blue. Ms. Duco and Mr. Volk sprang into action when the victim became unresponsive. Ms. Duco performed compressions on the customer's chest while Mr. Volk monitored the customer's airway. When Ms. Duco's compressions dislodged the food, Mr. Volk removed the food from the customer's mouth. Once the food came out, the victim began to breathe and made a full recovery. Ms. Duco and Mr. Volk are to be commended for their quick response to a citizen in a medical emergency. Sean Brandenburg, Brian Pomeroy, Robin Cranz, Andrew Miskier? Michael Shaw.
My cigar.
My cigar. My cigar. Oh, I love it. Monica Leroy, Lori, sorry, Monica Lori, and Cindy and Christopher Kurlinski. I think that's everybody. Oh, still waiting. In the past year, these citizens listed above observed impaired drivers in the city of West Bend and took action. In each case, these citizens either followed the vehicles or obtained descriptions and contacted the police. This information and the citizens' willingness to get involved allowed the police to locate and stop these vehicles. In each of these cases, the drivers were either intoxicated or impaired by the use of narcotic drugs and charged with OWI. These citizens are commended for their willingness to get involved. Their actions helped prevent vehicle crashes, severe, serious injuries, and death. Thank you to all those individuals for helping to ensure our roadways are safe for all lawful citizens to use and enjoy. Thank you. Did we get everybody? All right. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to thank everyone for getting involved. That's what makes this city a great city, and everybody wants to be part of the city of West Bend. So thank you very much for getting involved. We really appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the agenda of items 349.
Motion approved. Second.
All in metal, all on the sterling. Any questions? All right. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to the agenda items, we have item number 10, a resolution honoring Nancy Heeps. Jay, would you mind taking this?
Mr. President, should we just give him a minute to clear? Is that?
Yes, let's just wait till everybody clears out before we go to the resolution.
Okay, it's my pleasure to read the resolution honoring Nancy Heeps. Whereas Nancy Heeps was appointed to Police and Fire Commission on April 21st, 1998, in 2003, she assumed the role of chairman, showing consistent commitment throughout her 26 years of volunteer service, which can, which is concluding in 2024. And whereas Nancy Heeps exemplified outstanding leadership, devoting a substantial portion of her time to the betterment and enrichment, enrichment of the citizens of West Bend, during her time on the commission, Nancy played a pivotal role in hiring three police chiefs, 92 sworn police officers, and 52 police department promotions. She was also instrumental in the selection of three fire chiefs, numerous promotions, and firefighter, paramedic hires, including the addition of nine new positions in the West Bend Fire Department, Fire and Rescue Department just last year. The police and fire departments are extremely appreciative of her leadership, guidance, and service to the community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Nancy Heeps and expresses its deep appreciation for her 26 years of dedicated service to the city of West Bend. Passed and approved this day, 4th day of March, 2024. Congratulations, Nancy.
I was wondering why I was so busy. I never kept track of all those things. I'm not sure where 26 years went, but compared to all the citizens just now, I feel very humbled that they do a lot more than I did, and I sure got a lot more back than I gave to this commission. I have, I have excellent commission members. They're all here tonight, and we are very fortunate to have a great working relationship. Our decisions are not always popular. Sometimes people on the common council don't agree with them, but we think we did what was best for the city of West Bend. I also would like to thank all the past chiefs on both the Fire and Police Department and our current chief, Chief Noran is here. He's relatively new, but I know he'll be a great success in West Bend. And Chief Daring, who I've known for a very long time, has an excellent department. But really, the people that put those uniforms on every day in our Fire Department and our Police Department are the real heroes, and we are so lucky to have them here in West Bend. So thank you for this honor. It was very nice of you.
Not often I get to order the chairwoman of the Police and Fire Commission back up to the podium, so I'm going to take advantage of that. But just wanted to mention a couple of things. One, how extremely fortunate our community has been to have Ms. Heeps be an active participant of the Police and Fire Commission and then to have led the commission. The entire concept of the Police and Fire Commission is civilian oversight over law, law enforcement and fire operations because that's democracy. That's making sure that we never take the authority vested in us for granted, that we take our community responsibility seriously, and Nancy has guided us. The strongest piece of advice she has given me over the years is to stop talking so much. We get your point. So I'm going to, I'm going to cut it down here pretty quick, but we would like to. I know I speak not just from my deep thanks for the guidance you've offered me, but from our whole Police Department and the current, the past chiefs as well, past command staff that has looked very strongly on guidance from the Police and Fire Commission. Chief Moiler unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. I understand we may hear some words from him, but I know that he thought, thinks the world of the commission, but truly thinks the world of you and the guidance you provided him, and assimilating to the community, but also then running our department as wonderfully as he and you did together with the members of the commission. So I wanted to make sure. So I do have a plaque for Ms. Heeps, and I'm going to take your advice now and shut up. We'll get our pictures and.
Thank you.
Also, Ms. Heeps, not to, not to interrupt, but Chief, Chief Moiler also sends his regards and appreciation and wishes he could have been here.
All right, we have one more item on the agenda. We have an appointment of Community Development Director. Jay, I'm going to let you take this.
I'm happy to. From a resolution honoring a longtime community member and somebody that played a pivotal role in the city of, in our organization, to welcoming a new department head member, John Fellows, to our team. John, if you'd come on up to the podium, we're excited to have John here. He's coming to us from Glendale, but has a wealth of experience beyond his experience in Glendale, and I'll let him tell all of you a little bit about himself. And before he does that, I just wanted, Jim Rink is in the back. Jim, give a wave. Wanted to thank Jim. Jim stepped up during our three-month vacancy. John's going to be starting on April 8th and has really helped out the department. The department's looked to him in the last, during the last three months, and I'm excited for the work that the two of them are going to do together. With that, John.
Thank you very much. Again, my name's John Fellows. I have worked in a number of different communities. I started off pretty much in my career in Monomie Falls. I've worked a couple other places outside of the state. I worked in 10 years in the, in Columbia, South Carolina, which is the state capital. So a pretty large community there, worked a lot with a lot of different community groups and university and trying to bring different people and different interests together to see success there. And more recently, I've been in, in Glendale for a number of years, working with their community. So I'm really glad to be here, and I hope to get to know all of you in a few weeks, so.
All right, John, if you would mind coming through and introduce the Tefei 20 alderman. I'm sure we're all happy to meet you, and welcome to the city. All right, I would like to make a motion. First, I have to read the resolution.
Second.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, we have second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, welcome to the city of West Bend, John. All right. Reports. Library Board.
Thanks, John. The last meeting of the library board was held on February 20th. It was a meeting, like any other meeting, where we started with the pledge of allegiance, approved the agenda and expenses from the last month, and got our financial reports. But this meeting, at this meeting, we got a presentation from Susan Steinhoffel from Roots and Branches concerning a proposed landscape plan for Patrons Park. The plan was a year-end gardening project featuring Roots and Branches, along with the library, and providing an educational opportunity for the community. From design to seeding projects to seasonal care and then harvesting of the garden, the plan was well-received and will now be placed on a future agenda for action. Thank you, Susan, and thank you to Roots and Branches. Steve, the library director, briefed the board on activities around the library, including the blind replacement project and its funding. Park and Recreation moved some lockers out of the library's storage area and did some cosmetic painting in the recreation center located downstairs. Their efforts are greatly appreciated. The library is looking at replacement of the outreach delivery vehicle as its lease is about to expire, and we are also looking at candidates for the circulation manager because, again, Vanessa Taylor was the, was the circulation manager, and she has accepted a position as the director of the Hartford Library now. Congratulations to Vanessa on her new position. We also discussed the employee survey that the council was briefed on at the last meeting. We found great joy in that as far as the library's participation. The library board president shared Steve's third anniversary as director, and Brad and I, the assistant director's 13th anniversary with the library. Thank you, gentlemen, for your service. Agenda items included the landscape plan, which we discussed earlier, review and approval of the annual report that was submitted to this state of Wisconsin, and information that our treasurer, who was bonded at library expense, will now be covered by the city. So thank you very much. The next meeting is scheduled for March 19th. Any questions? Thanks.
All right, I'm just getting back, go back to item number 10, a resolution honoring Nancy Heeps. I need a motion. Alderman Allen. Alderman, sign, sign. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Now, back to the airport commission. John?
Okay, my report's going to be about a third of what Brett just had. They're all a third of what Brett just had. We had two matters that we really talked about. First matter was to approve the lease that we brought and approved tonight. So we approved that at the commission meeting. You approved it tonight. And the second was a lengthy discussion on how we can support EAA chapter during the summer's air venture flying, and it was more of a brainstorming session that lasted about an hour and a half, and that was really the bulk of the meeting.
All right. 13, Park and Recreation Committee.
It's me. Yeah, we, it feels like we just had this meeting. It was on the 29th, and we did the normal chain of events. Additionally, the Regner Beach revenue expense projections and update. We talked about the nature playground at Lac, Lac La Ronn Conservancy. Talked about a new business, an overnight camp at Lac La Ronn. Did a temporary variance in the park ordinance for that. Athletic court evaluation. We talked a little bit about some of the courts and repurposing to pickleball and resurfacing and that sort of thing. And then went through a bunch of the special, special events and approving permits and whatnot. Also discussed donations and then went on to reports. Thank you for those kind donations, by the way.
All right. Does anybody have anything? Alderman Dolnick?
Plan commission tomorrow night. Many interesting topics. Mayor won't be there. I'll run the meeting, so there'll be much merriment.
Anyone else? Alderman Allen?
Before you go to the planning commission, you can start the day out at 8:15 right here for the bid board meeting, where we will be discussing parking. for the mid-board meeting where we will be discussing parking. So downtown, potential downtown parking changes will be discussed at the meeting tomorrow. Okay. Also, for the good of the order, I would like to invite community members and members of the council to come down to the library Friday mornings for Free Coffee Friday from 10 to 11 every Friday. They have, their, the friends of the library bring in coffee, and then they have a program. Friday, this coming Friday, you can, you can sit in what they call Conversation Cafe and discuss the role of government in a non-confrontational manner. Okay? Next week, to recover from that, you can come to a Celtic harp concert, and that'll get you in the mood for, for St. Patrick's Day, two days later.
Any cookies involved?
There are, there is free coffee and cookies, and, and they have yet to run out of cookies. They have run out of coffee, so, you know, get your coffee early, but the cookies seem to hold out.
All right. Anyone else? Alman Sternig.
A great thank you to everybody who showed up to Bockfest this last weekend, and a special thank you to all the volunteers from the city staff, the Police Department, the Fire Department, from Park Forestry and Rec, and everybody else, who I'm sure I'm forgetting, that made a tremendous event possible, a new event here in the city of West Bend, and I think fun was had by all.
I guess we got to include Mother Nature. She was pretty well.
She was. She did tremendous. Bless us again next year.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Being no further business before the Common Council, I adjourn as chair.